Everyone, as we wait on a few more commissioners to arrive, remember there's a sign up sheet over by the door. There is a for and against column, so please make sure you sign up in the right column. And we'll be getting started shortly.
Everyone, as we wait on a few more commissioners to arrive, remember there's a sign up sheet over by the door. There is a for and against column, so please make sure you sign up in the right column. And we'll be getting started shortly.
F, do you need a few more minutes? Are you ready? Technology needs a minute. Okay, thank you. We're waiting on some technology. Sorry, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Just working on getting a focus review. So if I can see else. Y'all getting started? Okay, we are recording.
By public notice at the beginning like we normally do, so staff tells me they're just about ready, so we're gonna get started. I'll like to call to order the September 7th, 2024, Richland County Planning Commission meeting. Staff, please confirm the following. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news persons requesting notification posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
That is correct.
F, can you please take attendance for today's meeting?
Alright, attendance for the Thursday, September 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Um, Yonke.
Here.
Fryerson. Johnson. Duffy.
Here.
Metz. Durant.
Here.
Taylor. Serx.
Here.
Grady.
Thank you, staff. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the September 7th, 2024, Richland County Planning Commission meeting. As planning commissioners, we are concerned residents of Richland County who volunteer our time to thoroughly review and make recommendations to county council. Our recommendations are to approve or deny zoning map amendment requests. Per Title VI, Chapter 29 of the SE Code of Laws, planning commission may also prepare and revise plans and programs for the development or redevelopment of unincorporated portions of the county. The county's land development code rewrite process conducted last year's example, as well as the comprehensive plan process will, which should begin shortly. Once again, we are a recommending body to county council, and they will conduct their own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny map amendments and text amendments on a future date to be published by the county. Council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. Please take note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Please turn off or silence any cell phones. Audience members may quietly come and go as needed. Applicants are allowed up to two minutes to make statements. Citizens sign up to speak are also allowed up to two minutes each. Redundant comments should be minimized. Please only address remarks to the commission and do not expect the commission to respond to questions from the speakers in a back and forth style. That's not the purpose of this meeting. Please no audience speaker exchanges. No audience demonstrations or other instructions to the meeting are permitted, nor are comments from anyone other than the speaker at the podium. Please remember the meeting is being recorded. Please speak into the microphone and give your name and address. Abuse of language is inappropriate and will not be tolerated. Please don't voice displeasure or frustration at a recommended while the planning commission is still conducting business. And if you have any questions or concerns, you may contact the Richland County Planning Department staff down below here.
Mr. Chair. It's also a reminder, they can go to either.
Yes, you can go to either podium. They both mics will be live. This moves us to number three of our agenda, which is additions, deletions to the agenda. Are there any motions for additions or deletions to the agenda, commissioners? Or any motions to amend the agenda? Commissioners, staff?
There will be, and I think we can take this matter up when we get to the particular case. But one of the cases is identified, it has the incorrect staff recommendation, but we can take that up when we get to the case.
We also mentioned that number six is withdrawn. Case number 24-027, 1463 Ridge Road. So we will not be hearing our party today. And please excuse my mic, it's cutting in and out. Hey, no amendments, additions, deletions. We're gonna move on to number four, which on our gen- which is the approval of minutes. The staff provided minutes for us for our July 11th Planning Commission meeting. Any commissioners have any comments or concerns regarding these transcripts? Our hearing none, the chair makes a motion to approve the minutes unless there's an objection.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm not sure of the version that you received of your, of the minutes, but I believe that the date at the top of is, needs to be corrected.
I do see that.
Yes.
Aye, a le-
Yes.
Just to confirm, if you look at line 10 of the minutes, when I call the meeting to order, it says July 11th, so these are the correct minutes. With there's no objections, we're just gonna change the top to say July 11th, 2024. The chair makes a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you for rant. Staff, can we take a vote?
Those in, those in favor of the approval of the minutes from the July 11th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting? Yonke.
Aye.
Fryerson.
Aye.
Johnson. Duffy.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Taylor. Serx.
Aye.
And it's approved. Thank you, staff. We'll now move on to number five on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. So I'm gonna take a second to explain this, cuz I'm going to use this today. The consent agenda is an action item that allows the commission to approve road names and map amendment requests where the staff recommends approval and no one from the public has signed up to speak against the amendment, or no member of the commission is in need of further discussion on their request. Looking at today's 5B, case number 3, 24-023. Staff recommends approval. 24-025, approval. 24-029, approval. I'm looking at our sign up sheet, which I asked everyone to be careful to sign up for the for or the against column. For cases 24-23, 25, 29, and 3O, they were all recommended approval by staff, and no one has signed up against it. So I'd like to keep those on the consent agenda. Staff?
Yes, sir. Um, staff requested you remove case 24-025 MA from the consent agenda. That is the one where the recommendations are incorrect. So the, instead of staff's recommendation for approval, it should be for disapproval. So you may wanna remove that from the consent agenda.
Commissioners, public, hopefully everyone's following along. The properties that I pulled off to consent to approve, recommendation of approval, would be 2, 3, 2, 9, and missionaries, do you seek explanation on these properties? You want to approve the consent agenda? You make a motion?
A motion.
Thank you. The consent agenda, which includes road names and case numbers 24-023, 24-029, and 24-30. We have a motion for approval by Commissioner Johnson. Do we have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. F, could you take a vote on the consent agenda?
Those up here for the consent agenda. Serx.
Aye.
Taylor. Durant.
Aye.
Duffy.
Aye.
Johnson. Fryerson.
Aye.
Yonke.
Aye.
Motion passes.
F. I catch up my notes. Well, everything for these properties went ahead as a recommendation of approval to county council. They will have their meeting fourth Tuesday?
24th of September.
24th of September.
7:00 PM.
If you're here to listen to one of those, we're going to move on now to other properties. We're going to move along to 5B1, case number 24-020. Staff, please take it away.
Okay, um, stated we're, case 24-020 MA. The applicant is Paul Minso, Jr. The applicant is requesting to rezone 37.7 acres along Community Pond Road from AG, which is agricultural, to RT, residential transition. Staff recommends disapproval of this request, and is mainly due to the proposed location falling within the conservation land use designation of the 2015 comprehensive plan. And as such, the desired development plan of the comprehensive plan discourages residential development in this designation. So again, for that reason, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Fryerson, do we have anyone sign up to speak?
Yes, we do. First, we have Amanda Stansel.
Amanda Stansel. Please state your name and address, and you'll have two minutes.
Okay. My name is Amanda Stansel. My address is 341 Tillinghast Road. The property where my husband and I live has been in his family for over 170 years. I've been out there for about 24, and I moved out there because I wanted to be in the country and not in a populated area. This proposed change would definitely have a significant impact upon our quality of life as we know it. I urge you to deny this request to change the zoning for several reasons. Disruption of wildlife and the ecological preservation, of course, is extremely important. Increased traffic congestion, noise, pollution, the potential inevitable rise in crime, and higher property taxes to accommodate more residents, the utilities which would be needed to be out there, as well as public services such as trash and that kind of thing. It would overall provide a fundamental change in the character of the landscape of our area. So moreover, the existing infrastructure in this area is not necessarily conducive to residential transition. And simply put, I just don't want to give up my quiet, peaceful country life. Thank you.
Thank you. Homer Rose?
Yes, good evening, Planning Commission. Chairman Yonke and Vice Chairman Fryerson. Appreciate you allowing the opportunity for us to come here and, and speak. And my name is Homer Rose. I live at 1421 Van Bolkland Road, which is approximately 100 yards from the proposed piece of property that's up for rezoning. And I'm directly at the end of Community Pond Road. I'm here to also go against the rezoning of a piece of property because, like the gentleman- like the gentleman stated earlier, and how it was passed in September nineteen seventy-seven, the property was meant to be a rural district. And I think it was meant to be that, that, that way for a purpose, for development of agriculture, horticulture, forestry, so on and so forth, without any damages to property and wildlife. In our direct rural community, we've already been impacted by one huge change, the passing and putting in of a six-hundred acre solar field, which has caused the displacement of wildlife, soil erosion, taken away agriculture, conservation, and created a terrible eyesore in our community. So that is a commercial piece of property now. I don't think our, our community deserves another change that would impact us, to take us away from being the rural community that we've enjoyed. There is one tract of property to the north of me, it's three hundred and eighty acres, that's been placed in the Congaree Land Trust Conservation Program, and it is a huge, huge benefit to our community for the wildlife and the purpose of preservation of the beauty of everything that's east of Highway six oh one and north of Watery River. That section in there, we truly enjoy it. I've lived there twenty-five years, and some of my friends and neighbors are here that's lived there all their life, their entire life. And we would like to maintain the quality of life that, that we have already enjoying that rural community, and that's why we went there. That's why we went there. I live on twenty-five acres, and, and it's, it's next to heaven for me.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dorothy Kendall. Good evening, can everyone hear me? I'm Dorothy Kendall of three-two-nine Tillinghast Road, Amanda's neighbor. And also, which I believe is pertinent, I also own land nearby that is zoned agricultural, which is what this current parcel in, in question is. So I believe I have another stake in the issue. I wanna thank the Planning Commission for all their hard work, and also for all the neighbors in Lower Richland for coming out. I moved into my great-grandparents' home in Eastover in nineteen ninety-two. And over the years have been involved in many community meetings about land use planning. And it's my understanding that zoning exemptions can sometimes be appropriate when there's an overwhelming public benefit. This is not that case. The only people I can see who would benefit from this, there are two parties. The seller, who's abandoning Lower Richland, moving away. If they even live here, I don't know of the person. And the buyer developer, neither of whom are invested in our rural quality of life. I, I just would second, I don't wanna be repetitive, but everything that Amanda said and everything that Mr. Rose said, I agree with. Taxes, traffic, crime. And it is in the very environmentally important Kwasi Basin. And speaking of history, the reason we're called Richland County is because of the soil in that area. The first settlers said this is rich land, and that's why we're called that. And we have a dwindling supply of agricultural land. And also, speaking of history, my grandmother, late grandmother, lived to be a hundred, who I'm named after, but she told me when she was a child that Two Notch Road was rural, and they used to go fishing out there and swim in Arcadia Lakes. And I just wanna tell you that it can all disappear in a generation if we don't have planning. So, you know, nobody wants to take your land away, we just wanna all come together as a community and support each other. And thanks for your time and your hard work. Of Carol Fowles.
Thank you, good evening. Thank you for having me. I'm Dorothy Kendall's mother. And I did not grow up in the country. I always thought when my husband and I moved down here, my deceased husband, twenty-eight years ago, that we would retire at the beach. And he said, no, we are going to Lower Richland. And we moved to a family house on a dirt road near my daughter. And we had been living in downtown Columbia, between East, not East, between Five Points and Main Street. And I moved to the country to get away from people. I love the country, I wanna die in the country, and please don't change it. Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you pronounce your last name? Okay, thank you. Okay. Like my name, Fryerson, like fried chicken. Now we have Mr. Keith.
I can miss her. Address from her. Read it.
Forty Yolton Road. Over. Ivy.
Good afternoon, councilpeople. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. I came here to talk tonight about, with my family, about the proposal to change the thirty-seven acres of land on Community Pond Road in Eastover from agricultural to residential, to tell you a little bit about myself and about the rural area of Richland County. I'm fifty-three years old, and for all but five years of my life, I've lived on Community Pond Road, which, if you look out my front door, I'm looking at this piece of land. I've been a member of the Weber Lunch Buddy Program, a school chaperone for school trips, and a scout leader. After my wife and I graduated from Lower Richland High School, we briefly lived in Hopkins, before moving back to Eastover to be around our family and raise our kids. We are vested in and love our little community. We bought an old home that was recommended to be tore down and restored. We are part of a crime watch community and actively take care of the row of picking up trash, cleaning up debris that people throw out, and cutting the ditch bank so people can safely pull out onto Van Bolkland and six oh one highway from Community Pond Road. In all these years, there's been three houses added to our road. That equates to basically seventeen and a half years per house, and the newest one is being built right now. Now we're looking at the potential to have thirty-seven more homes added in a very short timeframe. Also considered, this area was recently impacted by, I thought it was a seven-hundred-and-fifty acre solar farm, but maybe it wasn't, but um, I just wanna say, I'm not against growth or development. I just wanna see it done in the right way and with some good planning for the future. I'm here today to ask the council to consider the impact on the land, the community, the wildlife, and the property values of the neighbors with this proposal. Please consider if this rural area has the proper infrastructure to support these changes in zoning, and also please help regulate smart growth for not only this proposed area, but all rural areas in southeast Richland County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
And I live at sixteen fifty-one Community Pond Road.
Thank you so much. It, it helps our staff out so much if you guys state your name and your address. Thank you.
Of Richard Stansel.
Sounds good, thank you.
Jessica. Row.
Excellent, thank you, yes.
Who operate to? Sandy.
Oh, thank you.
Rick. O'Connell. Eddie Spivey.
Everyone. Hey, so that ends public input. We are now open for discussion, staff?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. The applicant for this request is here, he didn't sign in.
Come on up? Yep. You got two minutes as well? Yep. Name and address as well.
Hey, good evening, commissioners and staff. My name's Paul. I live here in Columbia. And I mean, my address is thirty-one oh one Gaston Street. So we're, we're requesting here the residential transition zone, which is a minimum of one acre lots. So like the gentleman said, it would be a maximum of just thirty-seven homes here. Right now, my design is trying to reduce any kind of interior infrastructure. So I'm just proposing twenty-nine lots, which would be street frontage, and then a seven acre community pond. It would be a wet pond, fishing pond, that would be available to the, to the residents, and then depending on how they, how they work it out in the HOA, if the other residents on Community Pond would be welcome there as well. So the, the lot took on an agriculture zone just because it's over thirty-five acres. And as you can see, the lots around it, they, they are RT and HM. They, they go by the old code where, where they could get a lot on two-thirds of an acre. So we'll be following the old code if, if you saw fit, except the, these lots would have to be a bit bigger, and they would, they would all be a minimum of one acre in size. So yeah, we're not asking for any kind of high density here. Just, yeah, about thirty, thirty homes on one acre lots. And i- if the Commission sees that that is fit, and if not, you know. We appreciate your time.
Hey, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
What else wanna speak that missed a sign up for this? Nope, sounds like, okay. Now this is open on the floor to the Commission for discussion. And questions again for staff? Av, could you pull up the, the map again? And, and just for fun, zoom out a bit. That is a huge change to this neighborhood, the solar farm. Av, could you turn on the zoning layer? Commissioners, where you're? Commissioner Johnson?
Here with a question. Price, I, applicant. A question, but that I'm looking at color scheme. I rode.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Taylor?
Uh, staff, can you pull up page thirteen? Part of the rec approval was also because it falls within a conservation, as outlined on this particular page, is that correct?
Yeah, actually, that was the justification for the disapproval.
That's falling.
For further discussion or emotion? Yes, Commissioner Grant?
Price, the area out of the how long has that been?
Well, it would have become officially RT March, well, sorry, just prior to March first, twenty twenty-four, I'm sure there's thirty, thirty-one days in February, there was twenty-eight days in February. So it would be, March first is when we, our new code came into place. So that's when it would have become RT. Price. Prior, prior, I'm sorry, prior to that, all of the property that you see, you know, regardless of what shade of green that you, that's before you, would have been zoned RU. And as you remember, part of the recommendation from the Planning Commission upon the adoption of the land, of the maps, was the separation of the rural district, in which it became essentially three separate zoning designations. So we got rid of the RU, which, which would have been required three-quarters of an, thirty-three thousand square feet per parcel. And based on the existing acreage of the, of the land, it would fall into one of three categories, either AG, HM, or RT. Thirty-five acres or more would be AG. Less than thirty-five, but but at least three would have been HM. That's one point five, AG is three, requires three acres per parcel. The HM requires one point five two per parcel. And anything less than three acres, it falls into RT, which is one acre per parcel. So that, that would explain why you see those different shadings in, in that area. But it all came effect, it was on March first, when the new land development code came into effect.
Thank you, Mr. Price, that's a good As for a motion, commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Sirkz.
Hopefully, quick question for staff. Mr. Price, with regard to the Av's recommendation for dispo, it's, I think you said based entirely on the the fact that this falls within the the conservation designation outlined in the comprehensive plan, and that this designation discourages residential development. Is that just a blanket discouragement in, outlined in the, the comprehensive plan, or are there any?
All right, so, you know, we, we have this conversation, seems like we have it all more frequently now. But one of the things about when the different designations for the comprehensive plan were placed on the county map, you know, you try to create dividing lines, usually by the, by the specific roads, maybe in a river or something that would separate it. Again, it was kind of more, kind of broadly applied, which allows Planning Commission and ultimately County Council to kind of have a further look on really, is that the appropriate designation within those areas? It's just, you know, cuz right now, if you really look at it, you know, most of the homes that you see in that area do fall within that conservation designation, so really, it goes against the, the recommendations or the desire, the desired development pattern of the comprehensive plan. It does state here that under the desired development pattern, subdivision of land for commercial and residential development is discouraged within these areas. And also, that's, that's the direct language from the, from the comprehensive plan for the conservation designation.
I just wanted to see if there was any other context provided in the, the comprehensive plan, any other sort of guidance that we could
No, sir, you know, one of the things that we're gonna see, and you'll probably see in some, some of the other cases that that will come before you, it's just happening where the line fell. So again, is, it is a guideline. The whole comprehensive plan, everything from the Yeah, so again, is, it is a guideline, uh, the whole comprehensive plan, everything from the, the land use, from the desired development pattern, everything within the EV, including where, what the designations are, or just guidelines, and it allows you to look into it further to really kind of get an understanding of what that area really may be. And, cause sometimes the comprehensive plan doesn't get it exactly right. But again, from my staff standpoint, whenever we're, you making our recommendation, we, we call it staff recommendation, but it's really comprehensive plan. We maybe call it comprehensive plan compliance, we start saying that next time. But it is what the comprehensive plan is calling for based on what we have before us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cirks.
I'd make a motion at this point to forward, uh, case number two-four dash zero-two-zero MA to county council with a recommendation for disapproval.
Second. As for a second, Commissioner Duffy, seconds. We have a motion for disapproval with a second. F? Oh.
All right, the motion was for disapproval of case twenty-four, that's zero-two-zero. Those in favor of that motion, um, Cirks?
Aye.
Taylor? Durant?
Aye.
Duffy?
Aye.
Johnson? Fryerson?
Aye.
Yonky?
Aye.
Motion passes? Yeah, Mr. Chair and Plan Commission, um, Councilwoman, um, the Honorable Cheryl DeEnglish, who represents this district, will be having a town hall meeting with the applicant, um, and also with, for the community on Monday, September the twenty-third, from six to seven-thirty PM, at the Bluff Road Park, uh, at one forty-eight Carswell Drive, um, to discuss this and some other cases that are in her district. So the public is welcome to attend. Also, they may get more information regarding the specifics of the project, um, that typically aren't discussed at the planning commission or council levels.
And, thank you, staff.
It would be six, six PM to seven-thirty on the twenty-third of September, Bluff Road Park.
Hey, we're gonna get right on to our second case. Public is free to stay and listen to more properties if you'd like, or go ahead and take off. Thank you for coming out.
All right, um, our next item is case twenty-four, that's zero-two-two MA. The applicant is Kevin Metz. The location is nineteen twenty-five Kenley Road. And the applicant is requesting to rezone three point one-seven acres from PD, which is planned development, to RT, residential transition. Staff recommends disapproval of this, this request. According to the comprehensive plan, this falls within the neighborhood medium density, um, designation of the, of the twenty-fifteen Richland County Comprehensive Plan. That's, this, this designation actually calls for higher density, um, than what is being requested. So that's the main reason for staff's, um, recommendation for disapproval. Stated, uh, the desired development plan, pattern of the comprehensive plan recommends medium density residential neighborhoods as the primary use within this designation. And it is felt that the RT designation doesn't, would not be supportive of that, of those recommendations.
F, I have a question. So it's a PD requesting to change to RT. Uh, are there any specifics to this PD that we need to be aware of?
Yes, sir, we'll let you ask. We, uh, this is one of the things we've looked at. I wish we had a little more information to provide for you. But this was during a time when, um, Richland County had one of the zoning designations was a planned development. It's called PDD at their time. And that was really more of a site-specific zoning request. So what you would do is you made your mo, your, made your request to rezone your parcel, but you were very specific as to what would occur on the property. Typically, you're very specific as to square footage of any buildings that were gonna be there, any access points. I think you could almost argue it was almost a site plan review for a rezoning request. So every so often, you'll find some, some PDs out in areas, which is how they were able to, to get, um, get their rezoning and their use located on that property by coming as a PD. It actually gave some, um, allowed the community to have a, you know, a, understanding of what was gonna go there and not worry about future, you know, when you typically do a rezoning, it's usually very broad as to uses that will be allowed. But usually with a PD, it's very specific, so the community knows exactly what's gonna be there and council in their approval knows what they're approving. That was the good part of it. The bad part of it, and I'm gonna say while the applicants may be here, is it locks that property into exactly what you said that you were going to have. So in the future, if you decided, I wanna add an extra hundred or so square feet to my structure, you would have to go back through that process. If you wanted to change the use that you did not identify as part of your planned development, you would have to go back through the full process again. And so I believe in this case, the applicant may be just trying to take it out of the, um, planned development, which is kind of locked them into, um, a specific use.
Commissioners, any questions?
For, for, for Mr.?
Commissioner Duffy.
For, uh, uh, Mr. Price, just, just two, two points for clarification. Do we know for the planned development, uh, existing zoning, is that, was that for just one unit or is that for multiple units? Do you have any, any context on that? I suppose to, to the current plan, is it? How many units?
We're gonna pull it, um.
So I suppose I'm asking, would we go, be going from one to three, or would we be squeezing a more, more in, in the space?
So looking at the, the file for the PD, seems like it was limited to a four thousand square foot structure. And the sole point of access to the site was confined to Charlie Grunder Road. And it also stated that all parking for the proposed facility shall be located behind the structures. So that, what I read to you really is what was limits what could happen on that property. And again, if it, if it wasn't specified in, you know, maybe where, where you, what you're asking, um, Commissioner Duffy, like, they wanted to add a home, uh, if that wasn't specified, then that would not be allowed just if they wanted to, you know, put a, another barn on the property, that would not be allowed either. Because again, the PDD, PDD is very specific, is the uses. Commissioner Duffy? He, he asked the question I was gonna ask.
Can save staff from doing, on my phone, I just pulled up the street view, cause I'm just curious what's there now. This looks like a single residence?
We'll pull this up also.
Yeah, please pull it up, Tommy. Speaking for myself, questions come for this, with this one, because we, we've been seeing lately some PDDs, like the, uh, property, EDD, excuse it. This one, you're saying is kind of an older, where you really set parameters to a smaller lot.
Right, so, um, going back when I, when I first started under the land development codes that was in place on the zoning ordinance, there was a PU D, which is a planned unit development. I think it was a planned development one, one R and such. That's what you're referring to when you're looking at some of the larger ones that you've seen, where there's a true mixed units, uh, component to it. So whether you're thinking about the Oak Hills that we recently looked at, the, when you think of a Wood Creek Farms or the Summit, uh, Lake Carolina, you know, just using those as examples, those actually were the PUDs that came in. But the PDD on a PD was the site-specific zoning designation. Upon the adoption of our new land development code, um, uh, actually under our previous land development code, we did away with the PD and really even did away with the PU Ds and everything was known as a PDD.
So this one still sits as an outlier?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions before we move into public comment? Hearing done, take it away, Mr. Fryerson? Yes, we're gonna, look, hi, Murphy, how are you? We're gonna. Please state your name and address, and you have two minutes.
Kevin Metz, and I live at one oh nine Charlie Grunder Road, which is the, actually the parcel adjacent to the one we're discussing. Thank you, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. So, uh, this all came about, my mother, uh, had this zone many years ago to PD. She was gonna make a general store there. They have, they given me the property, I actually live next door. I'm selling my home, staying in Richland County, but I'm selling my home and in part of doing that, um, sold it to a, or got an offer out from a veteran. I was going to expand one of the lots into the lot which is zoned as PD. When we tried to expand the lot size, we found out that it was zoned PD and that, that the purpose had to be specifically for what it was designed. I'm asking that it be rezoned back to what it was before, which is rural transition. Also considering that, like you mentioned, that the homes, the, there's a mobile home there that a tenant, or not a tenant, person's been living there for many years, even prior to the zoning designation. So my ask is, is just to revert back to what it was originally, so that this gentleman that has made the offer to buy the land can buy a little bit more, a, a larger portion of the lot, which is my house adjacent to that property. Not asking for anything special, just wanted to go back to rural transition, not developing anything, not adding anything, not building sheds, barns or businesses, it's just a rural community and looking to sell a parcel of property, uh, to a gentleman and their family. And, and, and in order to do that, I, I need it to be, that designation to be changed for that, for that, for that parcel. And that's all I have, thanks.
Here.
Randy Gilbert.
Okay, thank you.
Kim Murphy.
Hey, Murphy, please come on down. Stick your name and address.
Kim Murphy, uh, one-five-four Old Laurel Lane, Chapin. Um, I'm not necessarily opposed to this, but I wanna ask that you defer it. It really can't be evaluated because you don't have that PD ordinance in front of you. As, uh, Mr. Price said, it was a specific zoning that was customized by the planning commission and council in two thousand and two and was codified in an ordinance which has the effect of law. So I don't know how you can really make a decision without seeing actually what was approved. In the two thousand and twenty-three code, the parcel based on three point one-seven acres is actually, would be zoned HM, which may not matter to the applicant, depending on what they're trying to do with it, but it didn't sound like it did. But I also request, um, that you have in your packet both the permitted uses for the proposed zoning and the current zoning. Right now, for this item, it only shows the proposed zoning. On all other cases in the agenda, it lists the current zoning permitted uses. It, it may be actually helpful to have them both in your packet so you can see. And, and also maybe include the density, if, specifically if it's a rural area that has the three different categories. And, um, I'm wondering if you might also consider putting your draft minutes in the public agenda packet like county council does. It would be helpful to see those in advance of the meeting, but thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Anyone else sign up to speak? No. Okay, this item is now open on the floor for discussion, commissioners, or any further questions for staff? I, I have a question for staff. I'll answer my own question. How will we manage these three rural, uh, zones, uh, with point one-seven acres that is larger than what RT would be? So it'd be, but that's not what the request is to hear today.
Um, no, sir, um. It would definitely just be a larger RT version. It doesn't make it, um, non-conforming in any way, at least not as I see it. It, it'd just be a larger tract of land, um, that's own RT.
Question, thank you. Commissioner Johnson, what are your thoughts? I'm gonna call you guys out, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, my first line of defense, looking at these cases, it appears that the part, out of this.
That's what I see from the map. Is that correct, staff?
Yes. Yes, sir.
You wanna see that as a motion?
Well, I mean, it, it, it does appear problematic. I mean, the requested zoning is flanked on either side. So, standpoint.
These mics are frustrating today.
There is, there is a basis for a recommendation of approval. Having said that, Mr. Price, if you just repeat the rationale on, again, please.
Yes. This, this parcel falls within the neighborhood medium density designation of the twenty fifteen Richland County Comprehensive Plan. And the neighborhood medium density recommends, um, a higher density, more medium residential development that the requested zoning, uh, we feel does not help, um, meet.
So, uh, and within this particular sub-area, and I'm just talking out my analysis in my mind, of the immediately surrounding property doesn't fit with the desired outcome for that area.
Yes, sir, I, I think it's very similar to, I think, the last case that we had, in which you could look at the, look at the parcels in the area, um, at least definitely in the immediate area of the request, and they would not meet the requirements of the, of the future, um, land use map, uh, as, as far as the neighborhood medium density. Oh, as as far as the neighborhood medium density designation and his recommendations.
Commissioner Johnson.
I mean, I welcome my colleagues' thoughts on this, but I mean, I mean, I'm inclined to say that since it's flanked on both sides that. There's rationale, that's why I want to understand the perspective. It's a interesting dilemma.
Just chime in a little bit more probably more than I need to on this. But had this parcel come in for, I'm just gonna say, R three. Uh residential, residential three, staff would have recommended approval. Um, for it because it would have been in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, as far as those recommendations. But then at the same time, you could have looked at this and said, but it's not in character with the surrounding properties. Now you flip this around to what you have before you, you have a request, I think, as you stated, Commissioner Johnson. That it seems to be in compliance with the um existing parcels in the, you know, media area of this. But it's not in compliance with the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Price and Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think the interesting thing about this particular case is, as Mr. Price just really well articulated is. Typically, the battle in the fight is someone trying to make it more dense. And the fight against a higher level of density. And here it's a request for less density than what is desired for the area. So it's a little bit of a paradox of the argument that we're usually facing. Cause cause the applicant can come in. I don't wanna say of right, but 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 easier approval with a higher density.
Commissioner Johnson. Feel like there's people over here. Commissioner Duffy? You're.
Mr. Price, just to just to follow up on what uh Commissioner Johnson said there. Yeah, ju- just for for clarification and coming in with R three or sorry, R T rather than R three, that actually. Risk it's tighter on the number of potential dwellings and say if it was an R three application where there would be higher dense.
I curse.
Excuse me, the R three would allow um six units per acre. Uh versus the R T which allows one unit per acre.
Commissioner Taylor, did I see your hand go up a little bit?
I did have a question though. Um. And maybe I misunderstood, but I'm thinking in previous um meetings. Do we, do we consider what's going to be done when we're looking at these? I thought we. I thought we was told it doesn't matter what they're doing. We just kind of look at it at face value, what the request is. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir, because um any zoning designation outside of this P D. Um, has a a multitude of uses that are allowed. Um, and so what we've always, you know, cautioned every um whether it be the planning commission or even council. Is, you know, not necessarily to focus in on what. The applicant or maybe intending to do on the property because we cannot hold them to that specifically. They're 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 allowed to use any of the broad uses that are allowed within that zoning designation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other comments or emotion?
I think I'm actually.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I make a motion that. Actually goes against my initial gut, but Mr. Price makes a very compelling argument. Um, in the case of tax map number R oh four two hundred dash oh six dash thirteen. Um, I'd like to make a motion to forward this to county council. With a recommendation consistent with the staff recommendation for disapproval for the sole reason. That. If we rezone that to R T, it makes it harder. For future cases to go to a higher density. In that area, which is the stated desire for the land use plan pattern in that area.
Second.
The motion is for disapproval in line with staff and we have a second by Commissioner Taylor, correct?
Correct, but I again, I think it's important that simply because as Mr. Price pointed out, I that 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 made me change my mind because I was going to. Support the the approval of it, but I think it does. If the intent in this corridor is to create medium density. We're not, it's going to make it more harder for the next project to request approval for. Uh zoning consistent with the desired area for the district. And I just think that rationale is important to have on the record.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and a second, so we need to take a vote. Staff, please.
All right, we have a motion for the disapproval of case twenty-four dash zero two twenty-two M A. Uh, those in favor of that motion, um, Sirc's.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Duffy.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fryerson.
Aye.
Yonkey.
Aye.
All right. That motion passes.
F and fourth Tuesday, which we have down to September, what is our meeting?
September twenty-fourth at seven P M.
We are now looking at the back page of our agenda as we go to case five B four. Er, twenty-four dash zero two four. Take it away, staff.
All right, um, next item is case twenty-four dash zero tw- twenty-four M A. The applicant is Madison Pickrell. The applicant's requesting to rezon fourteen point seven one acres at eight twelve Bookman Road. From Homestead, which is H M, to R five. To R five. Um, staff recommends disapproval of this request. Um, the. The the subject site lies within the neighborhood medium density designation of the comprehensive plan. We feel is not consistent with the objectives of the neighborhood medium density zoning does, excuse me, um designation. Um, as it does not meet the location recommendations, which recommends high density developments. To be located near activity centers and within priority investment areas. Um, as the subject site is not located um near an activity center or within a priority investment area, staff recommends disapproval.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, questions for staff before we get started? Hearing none, Commissioner Fryerson?
Applicant.
Come down. Just same reminder, two minutes to speak.
Yes.
State your name and address.
Well, I'm not Madison Pickrell, so um Madison is at home with newborns, so she asked me to step in for her. Um, yeah, she's uh a week old, so. Uh, my name is Craig Waits. I'm with Cawyers Commercial Real Estate Company here in Columbia. Um, I live here in Columbia at seven thirty-eight Abilia Road. Um, yeah, the the application is for uh uh transition from H M to R five residential. Um, the uh the 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 property is bounded uh by general commercial to the south, which is the skating rink. Um, heavy industrial to uh the west, which is a uh mini storage facility. Um, it's uh the land, the seventy-five acres back behind it is actually in conservation easement. Um, and then you have a residential, uh single family residential. Property to the north and then a church to the north. Um, we have met with each of the adjacent property owners. Um, and each of them are satisfied with uh the plan to put in townhomes. Um, we um. Uh, it we 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 actually agreed to an additional buffer uh with the uh northern property owner, the single family. Um, residential owner there, so. Um, the the really the the question became what what is the utility of this property, given the fact that it's got commercials running right up next to it? Um, it's got heavy industrial across the street. Um, and we felt like that a um a a little bit denser uh residential. Project would be a good buffer between uh this and the uh and the uh the neighborhoods that extend further out Bookman Road. Um, regarding um the comprehensive land plan, which I've I've heard a lot of. Um, I I based off of the comprehensive land plan that was put in place in two thousand and fifteen, um it 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 does not meet that. Um, but neither does the property to the south of us, neither does the property to the west of us or or um any of the properties along Spears Creek Church Road. So I I would actually contend that the the two thousand and fifteen comp plan is probably getting out of date. Um, and generally not consistent with the patterns of development at this point, but um that's neither here nor there. Um, we kindly ask you.
A final thought.
Kindly ask you consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Good evening, and I'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity to address this. I live in a neighborhood near there, not adjacent to it, but it's very near. Bookman Road cannot.
What's your address, sir?
Pardon?
What's your address?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh four three two Plantation Point Drive. Bookman Road cannot handle the traffic from condominiums. It just, it's not possible. Give you an example now, and this doesn't sound like a long time. Tuesday, I left my house. At six forty-five A M, it took me five minutes to get to Two Notch Road. That's less than a quarter of a mile. Normal circumstances, and that was light traffic. Thirty minutes later, you're probably looking at another five minutes. And it goes up until about nine o'clock when it finally thins out. Uh, there's more than just a storage units across from it. Krogers has a food factory where they make coffee, spices. Across the road from it. There's, I'm not sure exactly what it is, but there's a warehouse. There's several things, a couple of, there's at least three commercial. Manufacturer style across from it. Bookman, uh, the only thing I'm gonna say is Bookman Road just cannot handle the traffic. If if you got a train coming, you might as well pack a lunch because you're gonna be there all day. And that does happen on occasion where a train comes during the heavy traffic. Coming home at five o'clock in the evening. Traffic is backed way up, turning left or traffic coming off of Spears Creek Church on the Bookman. It's taken me a while. I never timed it to get it in that way. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Sir, coming out, sir.
Hey, I don't have any prepared statements. Uh, my name is Richard Preheim. I live at number one Plantation Point Way. Which is a property adjacent to the one we're talking about. The gentleman said they contacted uh community members. Nobody contacted me to talk about this. Uh, but I agree with Deputy Dave. Uh, there are. No way that increased density is gonna benefit our community. Uh, Bookman Road is a nightmare, uh which he kind of explained. Uh, the other thing is, I don't know if you can expand the the view of that. Uh, I moved here twelve years ago and all of the realtors I talked to. Um, you know, they talk about the highlights of why you would want to live in this area. And one of them was recent two schools for people who have school age children. The other one was uh easy access to shopping along Two Notch Road. And the third thing was access to a public park where you could walk and hike and bike. And that was Clemson Extension. Well, Clemson Extension is not public anymore. Uh, what we need to do i- is be proactive in this area. And we need to make sure that the infrastructure is ahead of any development that we do. The density is already too much in our area. We've had uh Jacobs Creek, Forest Creek, a whole bunch of new developments out there. And again, the infrastructure is just not kept up, so I would ask you as a council. To please be proactive and make sure the infrastructure stays ahead of any development. Uh, and I would like to suggest that if you want a constructive use of this property. Turn it into the green space that we lost because Clemson became not a public area anymore. There are thousands of people who live in the communities that surround Clemson Extension. And they were very happy people because they had access to a green space. If anything, that's what we need in this area is a green space, not more residential. Thank you for your time.
Phil, it looks like Cheryl Turner.
Hi, hi, thank you for uh listening to us today. Um, my address, uh, my name is Cheryl Turner and I'm at three Spanish Moss Court. It's in Plantation Point.
And I'm Phil.
And. We don't think we need this either. We don't need any more residential right now. Um, also, schools are overcrowded. There's too much development too quickly in that area. We've lived there for thirty years. When we first moved there, we could go down Bookman Road, didn't even have a light at the at Pontiac. We could just look both ways and cross. Now I have to wait for somebody to let me out of my neighborhood and then I'll wait for that light. And it's on and on and on. We came to a meeting when they were planning Jacobs Creek, which is a huge neighborhood right down the road. And said the same thing, that we needed more infrastructure before they. Built this neighborhood because the roads weren't gonna be able to handle it. And we were right, the roads are not able to handle it. Pulling out of neighborhoods is very dangerous there. And we just don't need any more. And I worry about our schools. I know our schools are becoming overcrowded also. Anything you want to add?
We've had a lot of accidents at that intersection. When we went to a meeting recently at North Springs Park. Uh, about the uh with D O T, about highway improvements. And it's like they've forgotten about our road. Uh, we we tell them about the accidents that occur right in front of our neighborhood. They plowed our sign down twice, our brick entrance. Um, they tried to make improvements there with a turning lane, but that just made it worse. Uh, between our interested in our neighborhood and Old Two Notch, right there at the church. Uh, traffic backs up easily a mile in the morning. I know that railroad crossing will not be improved because uh that's C S X. They're they're not gonna improve that railroad crossing to allow more traffic going through there, so we already know that's not gonna happen. The road will not be widened because of C S X.
And that space used to be a green space. It was a baseball field.
Right.
And uh the community, it was three, three fields and the the community did use it before. Um, until it was closed down. So I'd like to see it go back to a green space. Thank you.
We're having a hard time reading your name. Uh, four three four Plantation Point Drive? She had to leave, okay. Who else? It's a sign up sheet. Who else signed up? So this is open on the floor for discussion. Zoning history, our packet. This has been. Roll. Or the twenty twenty-one code rewrite? Correct staff?
Yes, sir.
If you look on the Richland County map application you just had, and you do go back in time a little bit, you could, it was all fields. It was like a park. Is that correct, staff?
It looks that way, sir.
My day job is looking at maps, so doing my homework, I did cycle through every time. I'm looking at, and I saw how it was a baseball field, kind of abandoned, kinda cleaned up, maybe around two. Pretty nice. History of that being a park. Commissioners? Question?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cirks?
Question for staff. We could look, go back to the GIS map and see that, there you go. And, or if you could zoom it back out and have the zoning overlay.
I have a question, I meant from the public. The property to the east, that's AG private property, right?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Taylor.
Question for staff. Have the. I go into your.
Usually would stick with the comprehensive plan.
Traffic characteristics in that first paragraph. It says this. Disaster.
So the level of service actually is indicated by not how many cars go by at a certain time of day, but how many cars go by continuously throughout the day. So it tells you whether it's free-flowing or if there's constant cars at slow-moving pace. And so the higher the letter, the more traffic essentially. And so once it becomes an F, it becomes unsustainable, and that's when improvements usually become.
How's an F become?
Once it becomes an F, SDOT usually gets involved to do improvements.
One letter, but.
Right, and that's up to SDOT for their determinations.
Thank you for the explanation. That's useful piece in our packets. Thank you. Question, Commissioners? Commissioner Johnson. I could tell you wanted to say something. I love it.
This is my last comment for the evening. How about that?
This is great.
And it's really just an observation, Commissioners. I mean, because there's not immediate residential adjacent to it, as I look at the three adjoining areas, the one in the corner at, yes, that subdivision is as a PD, so we really can't tell without looking at that what the density is. The coming across State Road on this side, the right yellow, and then the other on the other side of Two Notch are lower. There appear to be at least, it'd be R three and R two. Yeah, no, the subdivision. Yes, that one. R three. Well, I guess either way, what I'm saying is those, the subdivisions immediately around it that are closest are not at R five. They're R three and R two. And so, I mean, just another factor to kind of take into consideration as we look at this.
Johnson. Other comments, Commissioners, or a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Ask Commissioner Cirks.
I make a motion to forward project number two four dash zero two four MA to county council with a recommendation of disapproval.
Motion for disapproval from Commissioner Cirks. And before I could ask second, I hear second from Commissioner Durant. Correct. Okay, Commissioners, with a motion and a second, staff, please take a vote.
All right, we have a motion for the disapproval of case twenty-four dash zero two four MA. Those in favor of that motion? Cirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant? Duffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fryerson? Yonkey?
Aye.
So the motion passes?
A recommendation of approval?
Disapproval, yes.
Number twenty-fourth. Just give in the room a minute as people are stepping out. We're gonna do five, which is twenty-four dash zero two five. Take it away, staff.
All right, we'll get to this part, but there was a correction in the staff's recommendation. But for, we're here for case twenty-four dash zero two five MA. The applicant is Mike Crandall. The location is seventeen sixty-five Dutch Fork Road. The applicant is requesting a rezone one point three acres from institutional INS to general commercial GC. Again, staff recommends disapproval. Staff is of the opinion the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the objectives outlined in the comprehensive plan for parcel located within the neighborhood low-density designation. According to the plan, commercial development should be located within nearby neighborhood activity centers and may be considered for location along main road corridors and within a contextually appropriate distance of a primary arterial. The subject property parcel is located along a main road corridor, but the proposed zoning designation would allow for commercial uses that are more intense than the neighborhood scale recommended by the plan. For these reasons, staff recommends disapproval of the map amendment. However, the proposed zoning request would be in character with the adjacent zonings on the and uses on the adjacent properties.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Hearing none. Take it up by Ms. Fryerson?
Applicant.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Mike Crandall, nine forty-seven Stradlin Lane, Chapin, South Carolina. So we purchased this property in December. We're residential contractors. And so when we purchased it, it was under the OI zoning, which would allow us to use it as a construction office for some small equipment and to put up a building for storing material. So by the time we got around rezoning or to pull a permit to do our intended use, which was in May, unbeknownst to us, in March, the zoning had changed. And so Mr. Price and his staff were great to work with. We tried every way to work it within the intended use and ultimately decided that it was gonna have to be rezoned. So we reached out to Mr. Branham, our councilman, and he was kind enough to meet us at the property. So for us, I mean, that was kind of the gist of it. When we bought it, it was under the OI, and when it changed over to institution, we were no longer able to do our intended use. And really, the only way to do it would be general commercial. And so we were hoping by staying in line with the general commercial around us and to stress that we would not be, this isn't a retail site as a residential contractor. We would not be adding any traffic to the, to the area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commission members. Toby Ward, I'm an attorney, and I represent the applicant. And I just wanted to point out a few things. First of all.
Address as well.
Yeah, and I do live in the city of Columbia, thirty twelve Glenwood Place, and my law office is in Five Points at five thirty-four Congry Avenue. First of all, with all due respect, I think Mr. Price got it right when he recommended approval. And he disagreed with me, but I think the reason for that is, is his closing line. The proposed zoning request would be in character with the adjacent land uses. And if staff could pull up the color map with the adjacent zoning designations, what you'll see from looking at that map is that on either side, the property is basically a business use. We're gonna, we would just expand the general commercial a little bit. So, and as staff notes, the immediate area is characterized by commercial and industrial uses. There's a vet office, there's a residence at the back, but on either side is an office construction company and two general commercial zone districts. As was noted earlier, the comprehensive plan calls for neighborhood low-density, but given the traffic characteristics of this road, which is at an F, I don't believe the type of uses that would be allowed under the INS would really be suitable. And as staff notes, DOT's got no plans to do anything, nor does the county. If you look at some of the uses that could come in under the current INS zoning, you could have a recycling facility, you could have a bar or restaurant. You know, you could have numerous uses, a correctional facility, all of which would tax the already overburdened road. And I understand you don't, as a policy, you don't look to the intended use. But this property, as a general commercial, has a house that would be used as an office. And I would ask you to pay attention to the realities of the situation.
Final thought, sir. Sorry. I gotta keep it fair.
And also, you know, pay attention to what Geo said, that the proposed zoning request would be in character with the adjacent uses and with, and disregard the staff recommendation and send it to county council with a recommendation of approval of the change.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Who else signed up to speak? Nope. Okay, Commission, this is on the floor. We're just cut.
A question for staff, for Mr. Price. The current existing zoning, just following off of some of those comments, under INS, what is that allowed to be on the property under the current zoning? Just give us some clarification on that.
I don't have that one directly in front of me, but again, it is institutional. It's institutional use typically doesn't have retail retail uses.
As staff, we see in our package, we have page fifty-two.
I appreciate that.
We appreciate you. This is an addition this year. It's very helpful. No, we could have an arena or stadium. It's permitted. Questions, commi? Staff are looking at the.
Yeah, I think to answer your question, Mr. Commissioner Duffy, one of the things you'll notice is that the uses that you'll find within the institutional INS district are typically more neighborhood center type uses, neighborhood scale type uses. Whereas when you get to the GC, it's a lot more open, a lot more intense as far as the allowances.
Pull up the interactive map again with the zoning turned on.
Just kind of looking, I think we had this discussion earlier when we were talking about a PD designation. So if you take a look at the parcel that's zoned, that's of Kukla Construction, that is zoned PD also. As I stated before, it's kind of used previously as a means to allow a use, but yet not allow a broad use of the property.
No longer do that in our twenty twenty-one.
We haven't done that in a number of years even before that, yes, sir.
App, can you zoom? I'm looking for a pattern. I see Valentine as red. Yeah. And then we're in the red area again. I admit from looking at the map, it looks like this would be in character with what's going on in the area. I defer to my commi. Amen, so. Commissioner Cirks? Looks like he's getting ready.
I am just, I am just, give me a second to fully form my thoughts. And on, on the one hand, it's similar to a lot of the, I would say, the closer calls that we've had in the past where it's one or the other. It's in character with surrounding properties, but inconsistent with the comprehensive plan or vice versa. And you know, also without taking intended use into effect or into, into account. You know, the fact that this is a low-density. low-density, classified as a low-density neighborhood. I'm starting to run out of hands, but on the other hand, you know, I, I think about how, um, you know, the, the comprehensive plan lays out, um, a long-term vision for what, um, what we as a community, at least at one time, um, thought was an appropriate future for this area to have. And in making even well-intentioned or, um, well-meaning, um, exceptions to the comprehensive plan. Or y- you know, what would, um, be in compliance with the comprehensive plan is how over time, we end up with some areas in which we've seen these, y- y- you know, uh, sort of patternless, uh, zoning designations. Because bit by bit, um, we've made, um, exceptions, whether or not with an eye towards the intended use, but, um, but because for one reason or another, it seemed to make sense. And I don't necessarily ha- have a point that I'm driving at, other than to say that I'm, you know, conflicted for those reasons on this one.
Thank you, commissioners.
Questions, use. Durant. Commissioner Durant.
Oh, sorry. I said, uh, I'm less conflicted because as I look at this, the overall trend tends to be going toward general commercial. Upstaff, final statement.
Do either one of you want to phrase that as a motion?
I move that we forward project four dash zero five MA to county council with, with the recommendation of approval. Based a statement after with the.
Thank you, Commissioner Durant. Do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Taylor. Thank you. Uh, staff with a motion and a second, can you please take a vote?
Okay, so we have a motion for the approval of case twenty-four dash zero twenty-five MA. Those in favor of the motion for approval? Serx.
Aye.
Taylor.
Aye.
Durant.
Aye.
Duffy.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Fryerson.
Aye.
Yonki.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Commissioners. Number twenty-fourth, seven o'clock? Six o'clock?
Seven PM.
Seven PM. County council, our recommendation is for approval on that one. If I read the packet correctly, we jumped down to the last case. Number nine. Case twenty-four dash zero three one. Staff?
Yes, sir. Again, stated, uh, we're on item twenty-four dash zero three one MA. The applicant is Pastor Laverne McKinney. The location is four thirty-eight Raven Road. The applicant is, um, proposing to rezone six acres from residential two, R two, to MU one, which is, what's that mix? Which is neighborhood mixed-use district. Staff recommends disapproval of this request. As the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the objectives of the comprehensive plan, this particular location lies within the neighborhood, uh, medium-density designation of the comprehensive plan. And according to the plan, non-residential development may be considered for location along Main Road corridors and within a contextually appropriate distance from the intersection of a primary arterial. The parcel is not within a contextually appropriate distance from a primary arterial. For this reason, staff recommends disapproval.
To staff, any questions for staff commissioners? Hearing none, Ms. Fryerson? Come on down.
As stated, my name is Alexia Singleton, speaking on behalf of Pastor McKinney, four thirty-eight Raybon Road. We spoke with, uh, Councilwoman Gretchen Baron, and she recommended this rezoning. We are looking to have a daycare added to the current facility, which is a house of worship. Uh, we've been here in the community serving over a year. We recently purchased a product, uh, pro- property uh, from Apostle Turner, who had that property there for seventeen years. Our ministry has been in existence for over thirty-three years, and we've been serving the community and even here at, uh, Raybon Road. We've been having community events as well. And with the youth gymna- gymnasium that is across the street from our church, right across the street, and then all of the developing properties that are going up, we feel as if a daycare would be beneficial for the community, and we are looking to continue to serve the community through faith as well as in the area of childcare. That's pretty much it. That is the purpose for the rezoning, and that is what we're seeking. Thank you for your time.
For coming out tonight. Would I sign up? This is open on the floor for discussion and questions. Question first. Oh, Raybon Road is not considered a main road? Mr. Chair. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Ms. Fryerson. Oh, it's staff.
Okay, so kinda interject here. So, going back to, uh, previous discussion the planning commission had, I think, um, Commissioner Johnson, uh, was part of this, this discussion. In an ideal world, I think ideally, um, whenever there is a, an amendment that goes against the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, we should go back and look at the comprehensive plan, that designation for that area. Because a lot of times we're, it's not, we're, we're not just rezoning parcel by parcel. It's really kind of the area. So if you, when you go against the comp plan, what you're also saying is that it needs to change. Um, and I think one of the things that has not happened, um, over the years, is we've not made changes. And so I think as, uh, Commissioner Johnson was stating earlier, at least alluding to, you know, often we will, you know, take a position, either approval or disapproval. And but especially if you go against the comprehensive plan, but we don't go back and do anything with it. So the next applicant comes in and is asking maybe the same thing or something different. It really isn't any guide. And the only reason I bring that up is because, um, you know, it, this, this section along Raven Road over the years has undergone a number of rezonings. Think if we were to expand out, um, you would see, you know, there have been other parcels that have been zoned commercial. You know, the developments that have taken place, uh, whether, you know, from Florida Drive going all the way down to Feral Road. Right, so you, you can just kind of see some of the commercial that has taken place. What's the purple? Even light industrial that has taken place in this area. But again, when we don't start, and, um, I believe the gymnastics studio some years ago had their property rezoned, uh, for parking, or parking area. And the piece that, uh, Tommy has, if you, if he moves his mouse down just a little bit, um, right there, yeah, just a little bit right there, that piece you actually rezoned, um, your recommendation was for, I think, approval of that parcel, and it's actually a portion of it to go to R five, um, for development. So I think, you know, again, as we, as we often, as the staff, we give you the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. What we don't take into consid- consideration is some, you know, we try to put in the previous history of it, but we probably don't allude to it or elaborate on that enough at times, just, you know, to show you there have been a number of changes that have been, that have been approved, um, at a higher level that maybe should have some, had some effect upon the recommendations of the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Chairman. Go back to Commissioner Taylor. Or go ahead.
So question for staff as, um, always speak.
Yeah, one of the, so one of the requirements, um, for a, um, map amendment, of us accepting the application, is they have a pre-application meeting. Again, the applicant may, you know, in some cases, they know exactly what it is they want to do. You know, they've been doing this for a while in some cases, and they'll just come in and say, I just want to rezon the property. It's really not much of a discussion. Uh, the main, one of the main reasons we do have these discussions with applicants is our, the pre-application meeting is to ensure what they're looking at is going to meet their needs. Now again, we don't bring that to you as the planning commission, and we don't bring it to council, but is what we don't, what we, what we try to avoid is someone coming in, making a request, and then finding out later, that was the wrong request for what it was they wanted to do. Um, so that was one of the main, that's one of the main reasons we have the pre-application meeting, but it is a requirement, um, for any amendment.
Okay, and along those lines, uh, just out of curiosity, when you when you have that discussion, uh, I see daycare for the requirement. Do you go over those special requirements as well? So do they understand that it might not even get approved under, I, I'm assuming that requirements means, even with that designation, it may not get it, is that?
Yeah, daycare facility special requirements, um, gee, well, I'm gonna turn to that real quick, um, if you don't mind.
I need three, yeah.
Oh.
That's what I'm bas-
No, I wanted to go to the actual special requirement.
All right, but I wanted to.
Yes, um, yeah, just to let you know what those special requirements are for a daycare facility. Um, there are three. The client pickup and drop-off shall not obstruct traffic flow on adjacent public, um, roads. Any outdoor children's play area shall be fenced or otherwise enclosed on all sides and shall not include driveways, parking areas, or land otherwise unsuited for children's play space. Um, and finally, a day, daycare facility shall comply with all applicable state and federal regulations. I just, but no, we, we typically will have that conversation if we see the special requirements or something else that may, affect them after the zoning, because we, you know, we will let them know, you may get the rezoning, however, you have to take other things into consideration. It could be how the sites develop. Uh, maybe we see some issues with it. So to kind of keep it from just going through a pr- unnecessary process, we try to go over the, the entire development process, um, in, in most cases. But again, that's a little separate from the rezoning.
Thank you. Commissioner John? Will that something? Hi, did you have a? I'll find it fa- A, a major road, especially when you zoom the map out and you see how it's one of the few roads that connect between, what, Feral Road and Two Notch?
I'm gonna let Mr. DeLeage discuss that a bit, because he'll be able to tell you why and when's the last time things were updated.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Uh, so the roadways are based on the functional classification from SCDOT. Um, typically, your major roads are gonna be, you're classified as your, uh, major and minor arterial roads. So your Feral Road, your Two Notch, um, those type of roads, um, versus your, uh, collectors or thoroughfare roads, um, in this case, Raven Road. And just because I'm going off memory, I don't want to do that in this case. Uh, the traffic count, or the, um, functional classification for Raven, in this case, is a collector, um, which is kind of exactly what it sounds like. It's gonna collect the traffic and funnel those towards those arterials. Um, if you kind of look at these internal streets, um, within the subdivisions, those are your local roads, which sounds exactly, it's for local traffic to be funneled into your collector, so. Um, but I'll be happy to answer any other questions, and, and it's also that functional classification is based on the number of lanes and whether it's divided or undivided.
Want to point at his thing, he was a little sarcastic.
That came through loud and clear.
Throw another one out there that you guys love. The, uh, comp plan was drawn with a broad paintbrush. You saw that coming. Circle. One. Pointing just outside of the circle. So if this was inside, we'd say that this would be in.
Um, yes, sir, I'll let, uh, Mr. Smith answer that, but, um, I think it's very similar. It's very similar to when we do parcel across the street that I was referring to, that be, that was rezoned to R five. It fit, we recommended disapproval of that, if I'm correct, because it fell just outside of the circle.
The primary reason we, um, gave the recommendation of disapproval, uh, wasn't because of the proximity to the, you know, uh, economic development corridor or the priority investment area. The reason why we gave a disapproval was because the road was not a primary arterial. And that is for traffic reasons. A collector road doesn't hold the same volume, and that's why these kind of, um, recommendations for mixed uses are designated for higher volume roads, like primary, primary arterials and not collectors.
I think I'm just letting stuff, so. But, commis- motion?
I, I just.
Commissioner Johnson.
Do want to share a comment, but actually, your, your, um, comment just made me ask a question.
Is the existing church considered non-conforming?
I I believe it's allowed. Place of worship is a special exemption. I need two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just my thoughts. Um, I mean, each case tonight has been, it seems uniquely difficult more so than typically in in one single night where almost either case could go either way. Um, and in this case, you know, my first look at it, that there's nothing surrounding that's in that mixed use district, um, in that corridor. Um, however, with it being adjacent or being a part of a church campus, it just seems to make a natural sense and fit, but we're not allowed to consider the applicant's use as a part of our rationale for a decision. Um, so then looking a little bit further, I was saying, well, you've got the G C across the street, so why didn't they bring it in as G C? And because at least then it makes it easier on the argument, but as Mr. Taylor pointed out, not only the M U, but the G C also for the use of what they want to do is still a special requirements. So. They'd be in the same boat, even if they'd gone under general commercial and tried to match what was across the street. I mean, I know that doesn't give an answer, but it just, it just, it just outlines why it seems like it's a very difficult case.
What do you think, Bryce? Typically, we don't.
I'm not sure about him. That'd be fine. It it's really up to the commission.
Okay, okay. I'll take two minutes.
Thank you. Um, my name is Preston Young. I live at one hundred Deer Crossing Road, Elgin, Richland County side. Um, and I can tell this is a, it is kind of a unique situation, but just to give you a little backdrop on how we got here, the church wanted to do a daycare, so I think they reached out to the councilwoman, uh, and eventually met with, uh, Mr. Price to kind of discuss the situation. They had no idea about what zoning was what, so getting here was kind of at the guidance. Um, not really a recommendation or anything, but we didn't just come here. We were kind of pointed in this direction to seek this zoning within this district. Knowing about the the circle and the economic thing, but we're right outside of it. And if you're familiar, and like you said, Chair, with Raven Road, it's hard to believe that it's not considered a primary with the amount of traffic through there. And with the general commercial being right across the street and all the recent development, the residential development around it, it's kind of seems like a perfect fit. And timing is right for the church to want to move forward with, uh, offering a daycare to serve the community. Um, if you're familiar with that area, you're kind of, it's kind of hard not to see it as a perfect fit for what's happening with the growth in that area. With the general commercial, the residential nearby, the hospital being within a half mile, multiple medical facilities, um, offices in, you know, right within a half mile, so it just seems like the perfect fit, even though the perfect fit may not be in in alignance, in align with the, uh, the comprehensive plan that was done several years ago. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Price.
Commissioner Johnson.
You'd like, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Um, follow up with, um, in general, but since the applicant or one of the representative's applicant indicated that the councilperson from that district was supportive of this, is there a community meeting in the pipeline for this?
There was a community meeting held last Thursday.
Any feedback from that community meeting?
Um, I don't have any. I know that, um, a number of, um, a number of applicants, um, who had cases in District Seven, which was Councilwoman Gretchen Barris, this and the district she represents that area, um, were able to present to the community and answer questions, but I did not, I personally did not leave with, um, uh, you know, a specific direction which, um, she may wish to, um, you know, to make a motion, um, at the council meeting at the zoning public hearing.
Typically, the public input time is over. We did that earlier. I'm sorry.
You know, or, you know, so.
Tommy, would you run the map up again? Arcel to the west, that's R two. Was it acreage? What are we doing to that?
Mr. Chairman, yes, it is currently zoned R two, um, and which is of course a residential district. Um, the acreage is, it's coming up as blank, um, unfortunately, following a Thursday when the assessor's database is typically running in the background to update the assessor's information, which is why it keeps pulling up as a blank sometimes on here, uh, as you can see in the top right corner and no data. Um, so, you know, fortunately, I I don't have necessarily the acreage as the assessor has them, but a quick, just a quick rough.
Quick measure would be great.
So, yes. And then to the east.
Thirteen acres. Twelve point nine three.
What's the density again for R two with six acres? Be twelve homes that are developed to the west. We're making an R two island if we change this. That's what I see on the map.
Yeah. Yeah, I will ti- I can't say for sure, but I can tell, I don't believe that you're gonna have a lot of R two developments coming in, so the likelihood is you'll probably get a request, um, to amend that zone, the zoning designation from R two to either somewhere for higher, um, residential density or maybe something more of a commercial development.
Mr. Chairman.
When I'll say it. Johnson?
In the interest of trying to advance the item, I will say this. Based on the rationale of having the G C across the street and having, um, the applicant requesting a lower level of density, I will, for the commission's consideration, offer a motion of approval for case twenty four oh three one M A for those reasons.
And and Mr. Commissioner Johnson, I also want to point out that, um, it's not just a commercial across the street. You know, if you look at the, uh, the purples on there, it's a lot of industrials, a lot of, um, other than the R five, uh, the adjacent properties are non-residential.
Thank you, Mr. Price.
That's what I'm pointing out on the map. Even like R two will. Oh, we have a motion for approval with, against the F recommendation. Do you have to add another sentence to that since you're going against F?
Well, I gave my rationale on the front end was that based upon the surrounding uses in that area is the rationale for why we're going against that.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Taylor, seconds? Okay, staff, with the motion and a second, can you please take a vote? This would be for approval.
We have a a motion for the approval of case twenty four dash zero thirty one M A. Uh, those in favor, um, Sirks?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Duffy?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Fryerson?
Aye.
Yonkey?
Aye. Thank you, staff. Recommendation of approval goes September twenty fourth, seven o'clock. End of item five on our agenda tonight. Of the map amendment. I thank the public for coming out tonight. Part of five was letter C.
Also, Mr. Yonkey, I just wanted to point out that Mr., um, we we he was a former, he was a former, um, Board of Zoning Appeals member for the county, so he's also served here. Preston, then you also served with the, um, City of Columbia on the commission? Yes, I, you know, he gave his time also.
Thank you for serving the county. We appreciate you. You spoke the lingo very well, I can tell. Uh, letter C, part of five is administrative review. You have this in big letters that it's deferred, so we're gonna move along. So we go to number six, which is other items. F, have any other items?
Um, yes, the L D C updates, um, you know, we knew that this time would come where we would need to make some amendments to the code. Um, in some ways, some of them may be simple, um, you know, maybe changing up, you know, a deletion of, uh, a zoning designation in an area that shouldn't have been, um, just more of a cleanup and then there are gonna be some other times where we're going to have to sit back and really look at, um, I guess you could argue some unintended consequences as a result of the adoption of the Land Development Code. Um, kind of felt that that would maybe too much to take on just from a discussion standpoint, um, at a regularly scheduled council meeting, I mean, excuse me, um, planning commission meeting. So we were looking at, um, you know, it's staff's request that we do a work session to go over a number of items, um, that, um, that it looked of, that we feel should be, um, amended in some way, um, you know, we will have our recommendations, but of course, it would be up to the planning commission on how you want to accept those or how you would like to have those forwarded to county council. And I think some of them may require a little more, uh, you know, discussion, um, than just us bringing forth, you know, a proposed amendment to you and just say, hey, this is, this is for you to make a choice, but I I do believe there's some things that may, yeah, may require a little more information on, and I can give you, you know, one example, um, um, that within the, when we adopted an equivalency, um, zoning designations, um, we included what was the M H zoning designation from our previous code, and that is the manufactured housing. Uh, and that allowed for manufactured homes and in addition to other residential homes to be built um, on lots, um, by seventy two hundred square feet. That was the minimum lot size. Um, and I think that goes down to six, six units per acre, something like that. Um, yeah, about six units per acre. Well, um, when we adopted the equivalency zoning, M H fell into the R three designation. And the R three designation does not allow for manufactured homes. So there are, there are certain areas within the county, um, you can use, I think Royal Pines is a good example, right off of Two Notch Road, um, near the village where it was zoned M H pre- previously and is primarily developed with manufactured housing. Um, at this point, um, if there's a vacant lot, someone would not be able to put a manufactured home there. They would only be able to put, build a house. Now, there are some provisions in our code for the replacement of manufactured homes, but we're talking about um, vacant lots where there wouldn't be, of course, the, um, replacement that those would could only be, uh, used for, um, stick-built homes or modular building units. So, you know, kind of, so one of the reasons, uh, we would like to have discussion is is not just as simple as saying, okay, well, we'll just include M H in the, uh, manufactured housing in the R three because of those of you who was here from the beginning or at least early on, knew that was a lot of pushback, um, from the community. So it's something we would need to look at. So it's just a matter of what time or date, you know, from the planning commission, I mean, would like to come in. Um, true, but it is, we could also meet earlier than your six o'clock meeting, um, to have a work session. Uh, those days, that way you could, you wouldn't lose a day, you know, out of your normal professional lives.
We need to do to.
Right, it 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 really is, is, I guess what I'm, I'm just, um, asking is do, would you like to just do it um, sometime before the next, um, um, planning commission meeting? Or would you like to try to do it earlier during the day than your planning commission meeting? Um, do we have other cases, Tina, so far? So so far it looks like we have about five cases, um, for the October, um, planning commission. You know, overall, it may not be a lot. It's just a matter of what type of request it is and and, you know, how we look at it. But, you know, we could, you know, maybe come in, um, you know, three, four o'clock and that'll be, you know, in advance of your meeting and, um, you know, have the work session and then at six o'clock go into the, um, go into your regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Commissioners, would you like to double load a meeting like that or find another time where we can come? Our old time of three o'clock. Th- this wouldn't really require public input. Public would be invited to come out.
Yeah, for a work session, the public can actually, they can come and view, but there's no participation for them. It would just be with the, um, planning commission and staff.
Would our meetings to public can be all or educate or ask from you? And if people want to come out, they can, we'll, we'll post.
Yeah, so so any, anything that that comes about from the work session, um, will eventually go to one of your planning commission agendas and then the public would have an opportunity to then speak on it.
Commissioners, do you, do you add enough? Over? Yes. I haven't thrown it off, but what do you guys think about that? You wanna double up on a day or pick another date where we meet? For like an afternoon session and then that's it? So we have fresh minds. Thanks. Coffee in your sn- hopefully a bathroom break between meetings.
We'll, 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 we'll look into providing some, 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 something, uh, for that, for that meeting.
So we're looking at, uh, October seventh?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we did October seventh at three o'clock, again, do we have some, uh, some items I think that are worth discussing? Um, we're probably not gonna get to everything, uh, but we're gonna point out more of the ones that we feel are, are really necessary to get addressed at this time or at least have a thorough discussion on. And then, you know, hopefully we'll have a little break in between and I guess that we can.
Hours?
That's what I was saying.
Four o'clock?
Three, uh, four o'clock. It's really up to you.
Four o'clock, commissioners? Four o'clock, commissioners? Okay.
All right.
After we voted? We have to make a motion on this, or you? What do we do?
I think we can just, um, I think we can go ahead and schedule, it probably, let's just go ahead and vote if you don't mind.
Okay. Well, other, six other items, we're going to take a vote on, uh, adding a work session to October seventh at four P M. To get a deep dive into the L D C updates. I'll make a motion for that, do we have a second? Second from Commissioner Taylor. Vote.
All right, those in favor, Taylor? Fryerson?
Aye.
Yonki?
Aye.
Duffy?
Aye.
Sirks?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
All right. All right, um, all right, so the next item was, um, a lot of things going on. Uh, the Olympia Mills District Tour, um, again, you know, we've thought about other ways of doing this, but I do think that will be um, I think it will give you a better perspective by actually doing a tour, being able to actually go through out and see Olympia, so you can actually see what these amendments will actually result in. Um, we just need to really get a date in mind that works for, you know, members of the planning commission.
Possibly double load at November? The fourth?
Um, if that's, if that's the time you would like to do it, yes, that would be fine.
I think. I'm flexible. Mr. Duffy?
I'm flexible, I just know my availability on the fourth is, uh, more challenging November fourth, but I, I can be flexible.
Are there any date number that works?
I mean, i- if you would like, I mean, if, if you don't want to double up on those days, I guess from the staff, we can send out something again. You know, it's, it's easier when y'all are here, as a body making that decision, um, but if we need to, we can always send something out.
But if I toss out the date, Monday, the sixteenth? I work for staff.
For September? Does that work for the other planning commission members?
At what time?
What time would work for you, sir, Commissioner Sirks?
For, for me, it's, uh, later in the afternoon, the better, on the sixteenth.
Want to go into the? All we still have on out? Bring?
I need to lose it a bit now, um, so probably around, I guess seven is when it really starts to get dark. Now, I, it's, see, it's seven, seven thirty at least, but.
Uh, how about like five o'clock, does that? Or, or?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Commissioners, do we work?
Yeah, five thirty may be better, um, kind of helps us support at least that initial traffic that'll be coming out, I mean, five o'clock.
I know avoiding conflicts with work, I would also say four o'clock.
It's up to you guys. Flexible.
Looking at the date, September sixteenth.
I know that September twenty-third is a bluff road, uh, neighborhood meeting, we talked about that. I want to conflict.
Yeah, there, there, actually, there will also be a meeting on the nineteenth for, for District eleven. With this councilwoman, um, Shaquise Newton, she, yes, it is, um, she will have a meeting also, um, on that date. Um, cover some of the cases that y'all have previously heard, but also, um, ones that may be incoming for October.
I'm in, on that?
Sorry, sorry, it will be Thursday, September the nineteenth, from six to seven P M. At the Garner's Ferry Adult Activity Center. You know, I'm hoping not more than an hour, hour and a half, it's just, you know, traffic can get in the way, but definitely not more than an hour and a half. And I suspect we could probably get it done within an hour.
I'd meet before rush hour, then four o'clock.
Okay.
So that we get there.
Do you want to leave he, at four o'clock?
Meet here?
Meet here to leave at four o'clock?
I'm, I'm saying a meeting time to get commissioners here at four, and then the party bus goes, when we're all here.
Okay.
On the sixteen? Okay. Okay, for item six, other items, I'm gonna make a motion to schedule our Mills Tour. Four P M, sixteenth. Again? Again, from commission? Please take a vote.
All right, those in favor of the Olympia Mills District Tour on the sixteenth at four P M, or the immediate four P M? Um, Taylor, Fryerson? Yonki? Sirks?
Aye.
Duffy? Durant?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We will just meet outside these chambers, if the room's in use.
Yes.
Will take us to where, provide transportation?
Yes.
Okay. And snacks?
Yes.
Okay, staff, any other items?
No, sir.
Okay. Commissioners, other items? Okay, number seven then, chairman's report. Uh, a little later than usual, so just thank you, everybody, you're awesome, really good discussion tonight. Um, I'm sure we'll hear from staff about comp plan workshop meetings coming.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry.
We'll roll right into number eight, which is plan director's report, and you can speak.
Yes, sir, thanks. All right, um, turn it over to Mr. Smith here.
I promise I won't keep you guys too long, uh, this is a little important, uh, seeing that we went through so many different, uh, discussions this evening. Concerning the land development code and how it aligns with our comprehensive plan, which brings us to this conversation. The twenty twenty, twenty, or the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan is now beginning. What I mean by that, uh, Nilon Consultants is our consultant company that we have chosen to pursue our comprehensive plan. Um, we are currently in the data gathering and housekeeping stage of this plan. Uh, those items, uh, pertaining to G I S data, demographic, infrastructure assessment, environmental assessment, land use assessment, plan studies, ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. I could go into a lot more detail, probably would bore you to death. Um, the plan is to have this first kickoff meeting with staff and the consultants within the next week or so. Planning commission would be recommended from our consultant, or the consultants that recommended, uh, some of our planning commission members be a part of the advisory committee to be formed at a later date. Uh, stakeholder interviews will begin soon after the kickoff meeting, um, and then a website for the plan will up, will be up soon for additional updates and schedules. The timeframe for this plan is expected to last approximately twelve months. This is just the first stage of many, uh, lots of public meetings will be occurring in different districts. Uh, pertaining to different things, charrettes, uh, public input, and what have you. Um, but we will continue to update you at all monthly meetings at planning commission as well as, uh, county council. If y'all, if y'all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
And forward to beginning this process.
Yeah, and so, yeah, I know everybody's ready to go, kickoff starts in two minutes, um, sorry, but, um, no, I think it's important, I thought this was like, uh, I think is, uh, Matthew just said, I thought this, this today's meeting is probably a prime example of what the comprehensive plan, while we probably really need to pay attention to how, you know, our participation is gonna be in this, and what it is we'll be looking for. Because the idea is that it's gonna help guide, you know, future development in the county, um, yet you know, we, we may have areas, we just refuse, you know, we've designated, but we don't want to essentially pull the trigger on the future development in, in an area, uh, and eventually it's going to have to go someplace. Um, and I think some of the things we want to look at is some of the language of the designations. Um, I know a lot of times we look at, you know, you could look at some of the ones we just had where we're talking about what is on a certain road, or if it's in a contextually appropriate distance, those type things, you know, we need to really look at that language also, um, and how we may want certain areas to, to grow. So, you know, we're just, we, we look forward to this, this, I think this is gonna be probably one of the more important comprehensive plans that we'll have to deal, especially as this area is continuing to see a uptick in growth, not only just in recent county, but, you know, state of South Carolina.
O- over my time on commission, uh, the public usually asks, what about environmental studies and traffic studies and educational study? It's our opportunity to ping, like, other agencies to bring what you were saying.
Yes, those will, uh, will be the stakeholder interviews that we'll be having, um, S D O T, conservation. School districts, uh, I mean, the list is, I, I mean, I've got lists and lists of these guys that we're gonna be reaching out to for input and interviews to make sure that we get this right.
Bold D O T, possible. Usually what we hear from citizens, where's the infrastructure, why isn't it out there yet? Off saying you. Director, what? Uh, I'd finish your statement, but you do have something on the last of our page of our agenda, which our county council voted, okay, that's usually back there, I looked at it. Uh, number nine, the chair would like to make a motion for adjournment, do I have a second? Uh, Mr. Price, Price, please take a roll, a vote with hands. All right, thank you.